The East Orlando Chamber is proud to join forces with Business Force, UCF, the Orlando Law Group, and WUCF to present the 2020 debate for Orange County District 5 Commissioner. As the leading resource in business advocacy, community engagement, and regional connectivity covering 440 square miles of East Orange County, the East Orlando Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to supporting strong government and the political process on behalf of businesses throughout Central Florida. Business Force is Florida's Regional Political Action Committee. The committee supports businesses and good government in Central Florida. And as a sponsor of this event, the Business Force board members want to thank the candidates and thank you for participating in the political process and watching this significant debate in Orange County. Thanks again on behalf of Business Force. The Orlando Law Group is a full-service law firm, supporting estate planning, family law, bankruptcy, business issues, and more. As a proud community member of Central Florida, the Orlando Law Group is committed to offering hands-on care with expert knowledge to each client they serve.
We will teach you in a room. We will teach you now on Zoom. We will teach you in a house. We will teach you with a mouse. We will teach you here or there. We will teach you because we care.
Our moderator for the District 5 debate is WUCF's Steve Moore.
Hello, I'm Steve Moore, and welcome to the East Orlando Chamber of Commerce Orange County District 5 debate. District 5 in the east of the county is experiencing many of the challenges our state and region face during these unprecedented times. We'll be discussing some of the important issues that matter to voters ahead of primary election day on August 18th. Joining this debate are the three candidates running for District 5 Commissioner, incumbent Emily Benia of Orlando, Mike Miller of Winter Park, and Angelie Vaya, also of Winter Park. Each candidate will get one minute to answer each question. If one candidate mentions another in that answer, that candidate will get 30 seconds to respond. You'll have a minute each for opening statements. First of all, we'll go in alphabetical order and start with Emily Benia. Emily?
Hi, my name is Emily Benia. I am the current Orange County Commissioner at District 5. I'm running for reelection. I first ran in 2016 because I wasn't happy with the Commissioner at the time. I live in a rural area, and he was trying to build an urban development in the rural area, which was not right for the area. I got together an organization. We got over 10,000 petition signatures, and he still wasn't listening to us. After running and winning in 2016, I've accomplished a lot in my first term. Some of those things were getting developers to go around wetlands rather than filling them in. And also getting $20 million for children's services. That was a year effort, fighting for children's services, because I was raised in poverty as a child, and so that was very important to me. And during this pandemic, I saw the need for local government funding so that we could be able to help the people directly. And I worked the county commissioners across the nation with the National Association of Counties and was able to bring $243 million to Orange County, which that money right now is being used for small business grants and financial assistance for individuals and families. And you can learn more about me at fullfamily.com.
Okay, Mike Miller, you now have one minute for your opening statement.
Well, thank you to the chamber, and thank you to Steve for hosting, and thanks to the candidates for being here with me, Commissioner Benia. Thanks for the opportunity to have a conversation about what I think is best for District 5. So I've raised my family here. I've been here for over 20 years. I actually had the pleasure to serve in the Florida Legislature representing a large part of District 5, including the area of College Park, Winter Park, Baldwin Park, and down through downtown Orlando. I realize that East Orange County has its own challenges, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to run for the county commission, is to talk about how we can handle growth in an appropriate manner while, again, doing what's most important in this day and age, and that is stopping the spread of the virus and hoping to get our businesses back up on their feet in a timely manner. Again, I'm very proud to be a part of Central Florida. I've worked with Mayor Dyer. I've worked with Mayor Demings. I've worked with community leaders like Andre Bailey and Candy Crawford, the folks out of UCF for stores on some mental health issues while in the legislature. And I think my life experience and my time in public service, including 17 years here in Winter Park on the Housing Authority, give me a unique perspective on the challenges and the opportunities for Central Florida.
All right, and Angelie Vaya, you now have one minute for your opening statement.
Thank you for having me here. So I have a very unique background. I actually came into this country with just a suitcase, a scholarship, and a big dream. Earning my degrees was a challenge. I've had to do many odd jobs just to pay my bills. Today, I do own a technology company with employees, and I'm the only candidate that's a business owner in this race. My experience, coming from a third world country in Africa, you know, you had very, very hard, challenging times of not even having the basic necessities of life, like healthcare, education. My father, who's my inspiration and my mentor, was a medical doctor there, working with the mission groups. At a very early age, he taught me what it meant to give back to the community. I was fortunate enough to work with him in an HIV base camp, which to me today, being in this coronavirus pandemic, reminds me of my days in Africa, where we didn't have any control of what was going on in the 90s. We really didn't know what was happening. There wasn't any treatments for HIV back then. So I had actually had hands-on experience with my father, putting resources together, working with him on the field.
Okay, your minute is up on the opening statements, I'm afraid. With that, I want to get right into questions. So alphabetically, Mr. Miller, you'll go first on this opening question. If elected, what would be your top two priorities as county commissioner for the upcoming term?
As I mentioned in the preamble there, I do believe that we have to stop the spread of this virus. It has obviously put the whole world on pause, and we have had, you know, just an unmeasurable amount of tragedy. It's not only here in Florida, but it's all over the world. And we need to do our part in Central Florida to stop the spread by wearing a mask, by honoring social distancing, by doing the things that we have learned from science and facts. Again, you got to follow science and facts to break the back of the virus. And then ultimately, we've got to get back to work. I mean, one of the long-term problems we're going to have from this pandemic is unemployment and the ability to pay, you know, rent and the ability to pay our, you know, all the costs of living life. So I would work very hard to make sure small businesses, big businesses, everybody can get back to work in a safe manner while protecting vulnerable populations.
And Angelie Vaya, that same question to you.
My main focus would be safely opening the economy and making sure that we are, you know, advocating the safety measures. We do have to get control of this virus, and we definitely, being in government, have to have ways of measurables, quantitative ideas, being a little more innovative than we currently are, having more communication streams. Just like I said, with my pandemic experience from Africa, most of it comes from communication of how good you are on getting the messaging out. Being a business owner, I'm working with the hospitality sector as well as medical offices right now, and I will tell you that all of them are taking great measures to make sure that they're getting safely opened. I mean, they are open, and we have to keep going at that route, as well as affordable housing. That's going to be a big issue as well, knowing that we have a lot of unemployment, and we really don't know what our numbers are looking like as far as what we're going to be forecasting. So being in this commission is going to be very important to have somebody that understands budgets, that understands how to care for the people, be hands-on. So yes.
Your minute is up there. Emily Benia, how about you? If you're reelected, what will your top two priorities be?
Well, a lot of things I've already been working on. I'm definitely going to continue working on them because we're not done yet. And with the pandemic, there's a lot of things that we're going to have to change how we were doing business, as used as a phrase, in Orange County and the world. Things are going to change, and we have to adapt with that. We do have the pandemic that we're dealing with right now, and definitely recovery is going to be the biggest focus. But we still have to deal with other issues like affordable housing and diversifying our economy. And diversifying our economy will help with recovery. Affordable housing is definitely something that we can't ignore just because of the pandemic that we're in. We have to continue moving forward on that, and that's something that I've definitely been working on the last four years. And smart growth, that has to do with affordable housing as well and our transportation. And so we have to look at that more innovatively going forward because of the pandemic is changing a lot, and we could take that opportunity to maybe encourage more people to work from home, get people off the roads. And with our smart growth, you know, we may be able to look at that differently considering more people could work from home.
Okay, you all mentioned COVID-19 in your opening answers, and I'm interested next, and this question goes to Angelie Vaya first. What COVID-19-related future impacts do you think the county should be preparing for in the long term? Angelie Vaya, that goes to you first.
Yeah, I think that we're going to be impacted financially. So most of the businesses that I work with right now in hospitality, as well as the medical offices, are seeing their revenues have dropped by close to 60% to 80%. My own business, I'm down by 80% in revenues right now. So what is the county going to do? Because, you know, whether it's jobs, it's job creation, as well as sustaining, because this could be economically devastating if we carry on with this route. So it's very important for us to be looking at our measurables right now and looking at ways to start, not just keeping these businesses open, but to have ways to where there'll be consumer walk-ins and, you know, consumer-related messaging to say that you're safe, you're okay. So we're going to have to adapt, you know, restaurants, for example, how are they doing businesses? Hotels, how are tourists going to get back in? I mean, there's just a lot of economic impacts that we're looking at that need to start being addressed before we go into a crisis mode. So I would like to see more measurables.
Okay. Emily Benia, how about you? What future impacts do you think we should be preparing for in the long term?
Yeah, definitely, our industries are going to change how they're doing things. I mentioned that before. My background, I did business consulting, especially for women around the world. So all this online virtual work from home is something that's not new to me, and it's something that I've even offered to consult businesses now on how they can do this moving into the future. But that's something that we're really going to have to look at. Businesses are going to have to learn how to work with people working from home. And also, we're going to have to train our workforce, which is something where that $243 million is also going to workforce training, because people are going to have to learn new skills in order to work in this new world that we live in. And I worked at Full Sail University, working with graduates, training them, helping them learn how to find new jobs, and also attracting businesses to Orange County, working with them, and what the benefits are moving to Orange County, something I did at Full Sail University and something I do now as a commissioner as well.
And Mike Miller, how about you? Same question to you.
Well, it is going to be a new norm, and I can tell you firsthand, because I work at the Florida Virtual School, and we're seeing an uptick with children, K-12 kids, who are looking to a new way of going to school. And online education is obviously enforced upon us by the pandemic, but I think a lot of people are going to realize that that's a great opportunity to have a new way to learn. And I think in some cases, for children, it'll be a great opportunity for kids to learn in a new and a more progressive way. At the same time, just like we talked about here, the economy is going to have to create probably a new way of doing business, maybe virtually, you know, maybe a combination, a blended, as we call it in the education world. And I think that's going to change a lot of the way we get back to work. But the most important thing is we've got to stop the spread and get folks back to work, because if we don't do that in a timely manner, we're going to get ourselves in a hole that's going to take years and years to get out. So we need to figure out, we not stop the spread, get us back to work. The sooner we can do that, the sooner a lot of our issues will hopefully resolve themselves.
Okay, I want to ask another question about a story that's been in the news recently. There's been a lot of discussion about the future of policing in recent weeks. I'm going to send this question first to Emily Benia. Do you believe law enforcement should be defunded or reduced in our community?
Every county is different, and every municipality is also different in how they handle their policing and how it's even funded. So you can't treat, you can't say something and blanket it across the whole nation because we're all different in how we finance our policing. Here in Orange County, the Sheriff's Department is funded by their own MSTU and our property taxes. But I will say that since the Great Recession, we're still at those levels of staffing in our sheriff's department. We don't have enough sheriffs to really handle the population growth that we've had. And so we do need to hire more sheriffs. We're not like other counties that's been stagnant in their population growth. And I hear all the time from my constituents that we need more police presence or sheriff presence because the response times are high. So as county commissioner, I've gotten more sheriffs into my district. The response times have lowered and crime has lowered because of my engagement with the sheriff's office and my constituents.
And Mike Miller, what do you think about that? Do you believe law enforcement should be defunded or reduced?
Oh, absolutely. I think one of the pillars of our society is law and order, and I think one of the things that we need to be very cognizant of is the fact that we put a lot of pressure on our deputies to do a lot of things in our community. And I know we've been through a lot in our society in the last few months, and as Commissioner Benia said, every community is different. But I do think we've had the great blessing of having a great sheriff for the past 10 years, and now our mayor, Mayor Demings, and our current sheriff, John Mina, who is doing everything, like we ban chokeholds, we're talking about changing policies, we're talking about doing some things that nationally has been brought to our attention. But I agree with Commissioner Benia that, you know, having a strong and robust law enforcement, having the ability to get to a situation in a timely manner, those are paramount to keeping our constituencies safe. And I would never consider defunding the police. As a matter of fact, that would help them manage some of the, because they end up handling a lot of different things, not just a law enforcement action. A lot of times, they're there because they're the first people, the first responder to the situation. So we need to be very respectful and conscientious about how we train our deputies and how we fund them.
And Angelie Vaya, what's your perspective?
I would have to agree. I do agree with Commissioner Benia that we definitely need to keep our law and enforcement in place and have it funded correctly. I have been canvassing in this district for over a close to a year now and have found that in the east, as well as some other areas that are not municipalities, that we are shorthanded on sheriffs. There's a lot of, just like Commissioner Benia said, the lead times are very high, and this is something that needs to be worked collaboratively with Sheriff Mina, you know, with the new sheriff, depending on the elections. But we do need to look at these numbers closely, working together collaboratively and making sure that the sheriff's offices are funded. And like she mentioned, our growth is, we're a growing city. So these numbers are just going to keep going up as far as needing to be protected by law and enforcement. So yes, I do agree that we need the funding.
Okay.
Can I, since my name was mentioned twice, can I say something?
Yes, you can. Please do.
Yeah, so I also wanted to say some, part of the defund the police is about putting more money into social services, which is why I worked really hard to get $20 million in additional funding for children's services. Social funding is really important. We're also, I'm trying to work on getting more funding for mental illness as well. And this is something that before I got elected wasn't a priority, getting funding for social services and different services that the people need in order to improve their lives, and I was able to push for that.
Okay. I want to move on to issues around the budget next, and this question goes first to Mike Miller. In light of the shortfall in tourist development tax funds amid the COVID-19 pandemic, do you see the impact on the county's budget and current projects? What do you see as that impact?
Well, as we talked about yesterday in our conversation with the Orlando Sentinel, a lot of conversations centers around the convention center and what we're going to do there and how we're going to fund that through TDT funds. And I do think that is a very interesting conversation to have because it's a part of the broader conversation about our budget. You know, when I served in the Florida Legislature, we were very conscientious about the fact that we have to have a balanced budget, just like we do here in the county. And so you have to make tough choices. And with the reduce, with reductions in revenue, it becomes paramount to try to figure out how we keep our community safe, how we can still try to fund social services for those that are the most needy, and then at the same time, try not to, you know, we've got to make do with less. So I think the challenge is going to be in the coming days to see what, how fast we can get out from underneath this epidemic, this pandemic, and then figure out a way we can get people back to work in a timely manner. And I know that Mayor Demings is trying very hard. I know he's trying to figure out ways to get folks in a place where they're safe and then they can get back to work in a safe manner. I do believe, and I do believe that we will get through this, and we will have a stronger economy than ever. And when we do that, then we can talk about TDT monies and the way we use them. But quite frankly, right now, we've just got to get through the pandemic.
Angelie Vaya, that question to you.
Yes, I do work with the hospitality sector with my technology company, and because budgets are being mentioned, I did want to ask Commissioner Benia what business consulting she actually does, because her financial records and disclosures from 2016 do not show any business that she has owned. They've just been political organizations. I do own a business. I do look at budgets, and I do do payrolls. And I have seen that how we budget and how we use our dollars are going to be very important. We need to make sure every dollar is accounted for right now in the pandemic. I would also like to note, because we are talking about budgets, that Ms. Benia's, Commissioner Benia's budget in her District 5 office is actually costing the taxpayer on risk management because of her inefficiency of working with her employees. It's costing us 14 times more than any other seated commissioner. Her office budget for risk management that we are paying for right now is at, the other offices, our office seats are at $300. She is at $6,000. So because of her inability to work with others, we are paying that amount. And every amount...
Okay, I have to stop. You're over a minute, but I want to give Emily Benia a chance to respond. You have a minute 30 here. Your minute to answer the question and also including the 30 seconds that you have to respond.
Okay, can I start with the 30 seconds first?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. So yes, the business consulting that I've done, I've done, like I said, mostly women working around the world, and I would look at companies with their budget sheets, their balance sheets, their employees, what products and marketing they were doing. I would look at all of it and show them how they could do things more efficiently and make more money. I had to stop that when I became a county commissioner because I didn't want that there to be any conflicts of interest with all the businesses I was working for. And so that's why, when I became county commissioner, you don't see that in my resume anymore. As far as the risk management, it was high even before any employee I fired. I did fire someone within the first couple of months of being elected, and because of a lawsuit with that, which I'm not going to speak on, but it was a disgruntled employee who was trying to find some other excuse for why I fired him, and that's why the risk management rate is high. So back to 30 seconds.
You had a minute on that. So yes, please do answer the main question. You have about 20 seconds.
Yeah, so on revenues, the staff is really great about looking at all of our expenses and advising us on where we should place the money, where we shouldn't, where we could cut. And they're really working on, we really look to our staff to, they've done this for over 20, 30 years. But we're definitely going to have to prioritize what's important to us, and that always runs the budget, what's our priorities as a board of county commissioners, what's important to us.
Okay, the next question goes to Angelie Vaya first. Would you support expanding the use of tourist development tax revenues into areas such as education, transportation, and public safety? What's your feeling there?
So since I do work with the hospitality sector and knowing that these small businesses are suffering right now, given the current crisis, we would have to, again, look at the numbers of where they stand, because right now, that money really needs to be utilized on making sure that economically we are sustaining ourselves and have a future. The hospitality sector is our life engine. We haven't diversified our lifelines to where we can look at other, you know, I don't agree, I would not currently, given the situation, no, I would not want to use those funds in any other way, but to make sure that currently we economically are making an impact utilizing those funds and helping the small businesses. And, you know, coming from a technology sector, again, we might have to look at virtual ways and, you know, what is it going to take for them to carry on with consumer confidence and making sure that they have revenues? And that money really needs to be utilized, every penny, to make sure that the corridor is back, it's revived, and it's doing well.
Okay. Emily Benia, that one to you. What do you think about expanding the use of those tourism development tax dollars?
Well, at the moment, those dollars have been cut by 97% because of the pandemic, and that money really benefits the small businesses and the hospitality industry and tourism industry. And they're really going to need whatever's left of that in order to help recover. So we're going to have to focus that money in helping our tourism industry recover, especially the arts and cultural industry. They've been suffering really hard, and that's a place where we could also use this money to be able to help them recover.
And Mike Miller, how about you?
I'm in agreement. I think the tourism tax development money has a purpose, and it was designed in the statute to be just to that, to try to help the tourism industry remain strong, especially because a lot of small businesses rely on the iDrive corridor and the Universal's and Disney's. And those folks, they bring tens of millions of people to our community, but they don't always just go to Disney or Universal. They spend their time all over Central Florida, and that tourism development money is paramount to making sure that more and more people come here, especially post-pandemic. And it may be a different way to come here, but I do think we still need to highlight all the positives, all the outdoor, we're the Sunshine State, all the great outdoor things you can do here to enjoy and to bring economic viability to our community. So we have to make sure we protect our TDD.
Okay, moving on, the next question goes to Emily Benia first. Do you think there are Orange County public services that are good candidates for private contracting? And if so, which ones?
Well, I will tell you that, I'm not going to mention any specific companies, but Orange County, we're not staffed to be able to do everything we need to do. So we do have to contract with private companies in order to get the work done. We can't do it ourselves. But, you know, I try not to name, you know, companies and support private companies. As an elected official, I try to be fair to everybody.
Mike Miller, do you think there are public services that are good candidates for private contracting?
I don't have a specific in my mind right this moment, but I just know from my experience working at the Florida Virtual School that we contract a lot with private vendors to provide educational services. So I think it's a usual and customary thing to do in government, and we were a public school district, so I don't think it's, it actually would be, if you're talking about saving taxpayer money, if you're talking about doing something in a more efficient manner, I don't think there's a better position for a commissioner to be in than to try to find those solutions. So were I to be elected to the commission, I think I would always be open-minded to the idea of bringing more efficiency and lower cost to government, because that's usually a big challenge, no matter where you are.
And Angelie Vaya, how about you? What do you think?
I mean, there's always contracts that are taking place with the government. So again, dependent on what the dollar amounts are and looking at the budgets, if you are able to save money, because when you are putting an open bid, being a businesswoman, I'll tell you, you want a competitive space to where the government can't offer solutions to everything. So yes, you know, if there is an opportunity to where you have a problem, specifically now going into technology and looking at everything being so virtual, the government's not going to be able to hire people that can do everything efficiently. It would cost too much on the, to the taxpayer. So I would look at what we, what our needs are and put a competitive bid there and see what our needs are, and I would definitely advocate for it, you know, if it is, if it makes sense.
Okay, I want to move on to another issue that's a real hot-button issue in our region, and that is transportation. This question goes to Mike Miller first. It's getting close to the time when the county is required to start covering those operating shortfalls for Sun Rail. What is your position on how the county should cover this multimillion-dollar expense?
Well, actually, I was for Sun Rail when it first came through Winter Park. I know it was controversial and all up and down the spine here in Central Florida, and I give great credit to John Micah for trying to think ahead. And maybe this is an unintended consequence of the post-pandemic situation, because how people are going to get to work, how people are going to communicate, you know, or get themselves around from place to place, we probably need to take a look at what that's going to do with Sun Rail, because we did put the county, you know, or excuse me, the, you know, the municipalities and the county on the hook to try to figure out how to pay for the long-term use of the rail. So that's going to be an interesting conversation to have, because it's not just the county that's going to have to pick up the cost for that. So I think the communication between the commission, the different municipalities that rely on the Sun Rail stations in their communities, we're going to have to come up with an equitable way to make it all make sense. But I think it'd be very interesting to have a long-term conversation about how people get around our community post-pandemic and, you know, mass transportation or, you know, things like Sun Rail and Lynx are important. They're very important, especially for our service industry workers. So I will always try to look for the best and cheapest and cleanest way to get to work.
Okay. Angelie Vaya, do you have a plan for covering that shortfall?
Well, you know, mass transit, like Mike Miller had said, it is definitely needed with our projected growth. But currently with the pandemic, looking for the funds is our challenge. Yes, I, you know, I would recommend, you know, having a dedicated actual fund for it, just like the mayor had proposed. But right now, again, because of the pandemic, it's come off. As long as it's not a tax burden to the residents of Orange County, and it would need to be voted in, and my recommendation would be to lower the property taxes. While we're at the subject, though, I did want to mention that Commissioner Benia, when the subject of transportation had come up, I did not like her stand that she wanted our taxes to actually go up, because she was in the, going toward... going towards free rides and free links. And I'm not sure where she thought the money was going to come from because that's a taxpayer's burden.
Okay, okay. Emily Benier, you've got 30 seconds to respond to that first.
Well, I'll answer that within the question, too. Unfortunately, she does understand how the the taxes work. So we have impact fees and impact fees are fees that really we're growing a lot. And so when we build new apartments, new houses, it's for people who are really coming here. It's not for the people who are already here. And the Greater Orlando Builders Association is always lobbying against us increasing our impact fees. Our transportation impact fees have been discounted at 56% since the Great Recession. And the excuse for that was to encourage more development, cheaper development, and that hasn't happened. We don't have more affordable housing because that has happened. So we need, so when I had that discussion on the board, that was about increasing those impact fees to 100% and charging our developers 100% of that transportation impact fee. Because right now, the taxpayers are subsidizing that. And the taxpayers shouldn't be subsidizing that. And if they were paying their impact, their full impact fees, that money could be used. Well, the money that we're using to subsidize could be used for Sun Rail. And that's the plan. And so, you know, the Greater Orlando Builders Association, they have been lobbying against the increase at any impact fees and using the excuse that we need more affordable housing. We can't have affordable housing if we do that. And they picked their candidate for this race.
Okay, I want to ask about another transportation issue. This one goes to Angelie Vaya first. What are your thoughts on an extension of State Road 408 going further east? At the moment, it ends at Research Park. What do you think about that?
I would actually, so I did sit in August and September, and I have been speaking with some of the engineers as well on this project. And while I was even canvassing, because this was something that I had also attended a town hall on it, which may I add, over 600 residents were there in the town hall and Commissioner Benia was not there. As usual, her aides were there. However, when I spoke to the residents, most of them agreed that we do need that extension. And we do, it's going to actually provide, it would, it would definitely help with the traffic congestion that they're having in the area. Now, you know, there were some concerns about some of the houses. And, you know, there were some specifics that some of the residents were concerned about. But overall, you know, the majority have liked the idea. They're supporting it. And again, you always have to listen to the constituents and the voters on the people that actually live there, the residents and what they want. And it does look like it's something that would really help alleviate a lot of the congestion in the area. So I would support it.
Okay, Emily Benier, you were mentioned again in that answer. I'm going to give you a minute 30, including that 30 seconds to respond.
Yeah, well, my time is I can only be in one place at one time. And they don't always ask me what my schedule is when they plan these these town halls. That's the Florida Department of Transportation. They're not going to coordinate with me my schedule. So I can't be everywhere. And when I can't be everywhere, I send my my staff in my place. I live out there. I live out in the East Side. And I will tell you that we pay a lot of tolls to get to where we need to go to already. So the people out there are not in favor of paying more tolls to get to where they have to be, especially since a lot of them are low income. They live on fixed income with disability, retired. So they cannot afford more tolls. But I will say it's definitely a complex situation because of the grow that was approved before it was elected and which I fought really hard against. And the traffic that they're going to bring on the roads, we definitely need more capacity for. And the Lake Pickett North, which I was able to stop after I got elected, they want, they actually came into my office and sat down with me. They wanted to talk about applying for that again. And I said, well, what's different with the traffic situation? Nothing. So what are you going to do to fix that? And they went away and they pulled their application. And they're waiting to until after elections to try to come back again. So we cannot handle more more urban growth with the transport, with the roads that we have out there. And right now, that project actually has been stalled. There it was, it was considered not feasible.
Yep, that's that's your minute. I wanted to ask that question finally to Mike Miller.
So 20 years ago, I was part of the PD and E study that looked at how to get across the Wakaha River with the with the 429 that's coming and became what's known as the Western Beltway. So I see a similar conversation happening here. And I do know that it's a controversial situation because we have a quality of life in East Orange County that a lot of the residents are trying to, you know, hold on to. And I have great respect for that. At the same time, if we do that road right, the 408, and we do it in a proper manner, it can be, it can be a lifeline to those people that need to get in and out of there without the congestion that Commissioner Benia was talking about. But at the same time, can also be respectful to the environment because we can do it as a raised parkway, you can do a limited access. There's ways to do that because there's going to be a lot of population pressure as we move east, especially trying to get all the way out to Titusville, which ultimately I think there's a lot of that community, the commuting is going to be be using the 408s coming from the coast.
All right, and with that, we're going to take a short break. When we come back, we'll talk about development and growth in Orange County. We'll be right back.
The East Orlando Chamber is proud to join forces with Business Force, UCF, the Orlando Law Group and WUCF to present the 2020 debate for Orange County District Five Commissioner. As the leading resource in business advocacy, community engagement and regional connectivity, covering 440 square miles of East Orange County, the East Orlando Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to supporting strong government and the political process on behalf of businesses throughout central Florida. Business Force is Florida's Regional Political Action Committee. The committee supports businesses and good government in central Florida. And as a sponsor of this event, the Business Force board members want to thank the candidates and thank you for participating in the political process and watching this significant debate in Orange County. Thanks again on behalf of Business Force. The Orlando Law Group is a full service law firm, supporting estate planning, family law, bankruptcy, business issues and more. As a proud community member of central Florida, the Orlando Law Group is committed to offering hands on care with expert knowledge to each client they serve.
We will teach you in a room. We will teach you now on Zoom. We will teach you in a house. We will teach you with a mouse. We will teach you here or there. We will teach you because we care.
All right, welcome back to the East Orlando Chamber of Commerce, Orange County District Five Debate. We're going to talk about development and growth in this segment. And the first question goes to Mike Miller. We talked before the break about transportation. What other infrastructure or capital projects do you see as pressing needs in the county?
You're asking me about specifics. I don't think that's really in this situation when I was coming to talk about it. I was coming to talk about how have a have a reasonable conversation about what's the long term direction of the county and particularly District Five. And I do think that smart growth, managed growth, a lot of the conversations I've had in East Orange County with the residents are how do we handle that? How do we communicate? I think that's one of the challenges that a commissioner like, I know my past public service. I have been very fortunate to have lots of great relationships in East Orange County with a lot of the community leaders that would give me the feedback that I need in order to make a reasoned decision. So I'm not prepared at this point to say, here, here's a project I want to do. Or here's a, other than the thing we talked about in the last segment with the 408, I do think we do need to talk about that as a as a long term project. But the, as projects come up as a commissioner, you have to be able to find the resources in the community to get the feedback from the residents and then figure out what is in the best interest of your constituents on a whole. So that's what I would do as your next commissioner.
Angelie Vaya, do you have any particular infrastructure projects in mind that you think are particularly pressing needs?
Well, coming from a technology sector, again, I am quite disappointed with where our to how I call it a dinosaur world that the government technology systems work on. So one of the, you know, one of the things that I would like to see is to bring efficiency because technology does, you know, it does reduce costs and it brings efficiency into how we manage government. So that would be something that I would be interested in looking into. But that's not a specific project. As far as projects are concerned, we have to realize that District Five is it's a very large and very diverse district. It has an urban area as well as a very rural, you know, a rural area to it. So as a commissioner, you have to balance the growth as well as the quality of life. And that is what I would look at first before any project comes up.
And that question to Emily Benier.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, certainly. Emily Benier, you know, sorry. Yes, certainly, Emily Benier, before the break, we talked about transportation. What other infrastructure or capital projects do you see as pressing needs in the county?
But as far as specific projects, so I had community meetings all across our district. And I also communicate with them with a newsletter that I send out every two weeks. And I get a lot of feedback right now with the pandemic, actually doing every two weeks a virtual town hall where I get questions and but with those community meetings I've had across the district, one thing that I found the need for was community centers and meeting spaces. A lot of people want some space that they can meet. So I am working on getting a community center in Blanchard Park. That's one project that I'm working on. I'm working on expanding, I already got the funding for expanding the Bethel Community Center because they want it more space in order to do like Pilates and different exercise training there. I'm doing a multi room, multi use room there in case people want to also use it for computers or any other uses. So those are a couple of projects that I'm working on that's not related to transportation since we already talked about that.
All right, so next question goes to Angelie Vaya first. Companies that choose to relocate or expand in Orange County are key to its economic growth. As our region looks to offer ways to diversify its economy, what are your plans to attract new jobs to the county?
Again, coming from being a successful business owner in the technology sector, I'm all about diversifying our lifelines right now. We can't just be looking at the hospitality sector. Smart growth is is one of the areas that, you know, I find that with UCF with, you know, we sit with UCF, Valencia, Rollins, all in this district and District Five. And I actually hire interns and students from there in the IT sector. And one of the main concerns that we find with the students is that I can't retain them because we don't have any any jobs, anybody, any companies moving into Orange County that can offer them the higher paying jobs that the other cities offer. So retaining our talent pool is one of the most important things, specifically being that UCF is here, as well as we need to diversify. We need to diversify and have research corridors and invest in our future.
And Emily Benier, what are your plans to to attract new jobs to the county?
Yeah, so my experience working with Full Sail University was to work with graduates and help them either create a job or find a job. And that was nationwide. I actually worked with graduates nationwide because Full Sail University had a, the program I was working on was virtual. I also worked with businesses who wanted to relocate here. And one of the things that they would always bring up is that the they wanted a quality of life of where they were moving to for their employees. And so that's what I bring up with the job that I have at Smart Growth is that we have to make sure that we have a good quality of life. And that's how we're going to be able to attract people here. If people, if their employees are sitting in traffic and they can't be home with their families, they're not going to want to move their business here. And so that's definitely something we have to look at. But I would say competing with other cities across our country, they have higher wages for the cost of living that's there. And so a lot of those those younger folks would want to move over there because they could get more for their money. And that's definitely an issue that we have here in Orange County.
And Mike Miller, your plans to attract new jobs to the county?
Well, it's been a challenge in central Florida for all my time here, 20 plus years, that we need to diversify our economy. We have a heavily dependent on tourism, which is a wonderful thing. It's the golden deuce. But we've always been saying to ourselves in the community, and I've been working on this in my time in the legislature, is how can we, how can we find other businesses to move here? And I give great credit to UCF for trying to grow and incubate new businesses. I know we have places like Full Sail University, as the commissioner mentioned, that are trying to grow the next generation of movie, you know, and the movie industry, by the way, is would be a great diversification for us. The ultimate goal here is, you know, the founding fathers had it right. We are competing amongst the 50 states. And I would argue we're competing here amongst the 67 counties. And I think Orange County is one of the best places to live. We have challenges with our schools and we have challenges with our with our living wages. But we're going to work on that. And I think the reason that the companies are going to want to move here is because we're going to have commissioners like myself that are pro business. And we want you to move here. We want you to bring your families here because we're going to make it a very family friendly environment and a business friendly environment by reducing regulations and bringing you here to grow your business.
Okay, well, a couple of you there mentioned UCF. And the next question is about UCF. This goes to Emily.
Yes, I apologize.
Please do.
Can I respond?
Certainly, 30 seconds.
Yes, so Full Sail University doesn't only do the movie industry. They also do a lot of business degrees as well. But we had the film incentive here in Florida. And we were going to be the next Hollywood. And we were growing our film industry here. But when that film incentive was taken away, that took away a lot of the jobs. And some of the graduates in the film school at Full Sail University, I had to divert them to other places for work because all the work from the film industry was lost here when that incentive was taken away.
Okay, let's move on to the next question. Emily Benier, this one is to you first, and it pertains to UCF. With the Central Florida Research Park next to UCF playing a critical role in supporting the nation's largest modeling simulation and training economic cluster, how can Orange County, in your view, best continue to support that industry?
We have such a potential there. And we could have so many more jobs come in. They they're not fully developed. And so I actually sit on the board with the Research Park. And we've been trying to discuss how to fix the transportation issues we have around there. Because that's what, like I said earlier, that's what's preventing businesses from being able to invest and move into this area is because the transportation is so bad. They don't want their employees sitting in traffic. So I've been trying to work with them. And we do have some conflicts because the Navy base is also there. And they, because of security, we can't do what we want with transportation. So I do have some plans, but because of the security issues, we're not able to do it. So it's definitely a complex situation, but there is so much potential there. And I'm still working with them to try to find some solutions.
And Mike Miller, how do you think the county should support that industry?
You know, as a former congressional staffer, I went out to to Stricom and the modeling and simulation and all the incubator companies around around the the base there. And it is a wonderful attribute for our community. And I would do everything I can as a commissioner to continue to support everything they're trying to do there. And then the the ancillary businesses that come off of those incubator or come off of the the military, they they can create some of the next great things in our generation. And that's one of the interesting things about, you know, I worked with Governor Scott. You know, I've got a lot of great relationships in the legislature right now about how to bring businesses in from other places. But you know what? Growing the next Google here or growing the next Microsoft is even a better way to do it because it's hard to get those guys to move because nobody wants the, you know, that the town they're coming from is going to fight back. So I, yeah, I think the idea of getting the that UCF incubator is a is a golden gem that I would work very hard as a commissioner to continue to grow and to continue to look to diversify all around that that Research Park to figure out the next, the next Google or the next, the next big Fortune 500 company.
And Angelie Vaya, how do you think the county should support that simulation and training economic cluster?
This has to be one of our priorities. And like I said, coming from the technology sector, I actually hire a lot of students. So we've been working with Florida Polytech right, Polytech right now. And we have a product line called, it's a, it's a large kiosk that sits in 140 hotels, which most of the programming was done by these students. So we have to have incubators. I actually started my company out of an incubator. So we have to encourage innovation by creating the flexibility of businesses to fully take advantage of of these breakthroughs in science and technology. It helps everyone. So if we were encouraging, you can like just for myself, for example, I get so such a low cost on on the products that we're developing right now. We actually have a virtual Zoom like technology called Kazam that's coming out into the market space as well. So it's companies like myself that benefit from from having these incubators. And we have to support it because more businesses like myself that I'm able to provide these services to, the more we will succeed on on increasing that.
I have to stop you there. We need to move on to the next question, and it actually pertains to an environmental issue in the district. Mike Miller, you'll get this question first. What is your position on protecting land east of the Econ River from development and urban sprawl?
And that's a, that's a great question. And that's one of the keys in this commission race is I really, and I, I've been very fortunate to be able to spend some time out there. And I actually was just out there this weekend and looking and thinking and believing in the concerns. And I've been going back now for 20, the all 27 years I've been here and even previous to my living in central Florida. It is a big challenge because we have some beautiful wetlands there. We have some beautiful areas where we can have wild We have some beautiful areas where we can have wildlife corridors, which I think is one of the keys to the whole conversation is, you know, just having a park or having something set aside is not the key to this. The key to this is having a wildlife corridor where actually we can have full and robust places for wildlife to, to live and, and have the next generation of their offspring live in a safe environment, which is why I mentioned in the earlier segment about, you know, putting the portions of the 408 being a parkway rather than on the ground like they're doing out on the, on the west side of town. So I think environmentally sensitive areas are, are going to be key to what make our plate, which is why central Florida is one of the most beautiful places in the country. We do very conscientiously protect those areas that we need to make sure that the wildlife can live and that we can keep pristine. And I will work on that as a commissioner.
Anjali Vaya, what's your position on protecting that land east of the Econ River?
We must protect it. And, you know, speaking with the residents, while I've been canvassing, this is a very important issue for them. The county had made promises to them, and these promises should be kept. We shouldn't be breaking them. You know, this was, it was, it was something that was written, and, and we should not be breaking that. Now, while I do say that, we do need a commissioner that can make sure that she collaboratively works, he or she works collaboratively with the board of director, with the current board to make sure that when issues do come up, that these motions that you do have are actually passed. And, you know, working collaboratively will make a big difference because that's one of the issues that I have seen with Commissioner Benia on often not getting a second on her motions. So, you know, working again, having relationships is very important. So yes, this is an important issue, and you definitely need a commissioner that can get a second.
Okay, Emily Benia, I'm going to give you a minute 30 to include 30 seconds to respond.
Yeah, I definitely do get seconds. Not always, but there are very few situations. I mean, maybe one or two. But I will say that the lobbyists, so they try to give money to the board of county commissioners in order to get us to vote their way. And you could watch my record, you know, people have given, given to my campaign, I've still voted no on. But sometimes, you know, they also give to the other commissioners, and there's a lot of pressure. And the Greater Orlando Builders Association, the developers, like I said, they chose their candidate. And all you have to do is go to the financial records of each candidate here, you could find out who it is. They put a lot of pressure on the board in order to, they, they basically control the county with all the campaign donations that they make. And that's something that really has to change in Orange County. And I cannot be bought.
Okay, we're going to move on to another question that pertains to UCF. And Anjali Vaya, you'll get this one first. Orange County and UCF have grown quickly over the last five decades. Name one way that the county can best support UCF's continued growth and one way that UCF, importantly, can best support the county's future needs. What do you think?
Well, I, you know, I work with a lot of Chamber of Commerces as well, and I do sit on the board of the Indian American Chamber of Commerce. And we, we've done a lot with UCF as far, as far as private partnerships are concerned. So I'd like to see a little bit more of a focus of having these private sector partnerships evolve a little better and have, again, a very collaborative approach. And UCF, like I said, has a huge talent pool on, on some various industry sectors. So getting those sectors more involved and being the commissioner in there to make sure that you're, you know, that you're, you're enhancing those relationships and making sure that they move forward. So this is a, UCF is a big part of where we're heading. And these partnerships are critical from corporate to businesses as well as UCF and its professors. Thank you.
Emily Benia, what do you think?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, certainly. Over the last five decades, UCF has grown substantially. What do you think are the best ways that, that UCF can support the county and, and the county can support UCF?
Well, the way, it's a very, it's a very complex relationship with the UCF. They really have a lot of control of what happens in their property. And they're really not willing to invest in what happens outside of their property. But we've been able to work with them on an agreement to be able to help with the traffic situation, Alafeha Trail and the pedestrian safety. And we've been able to get out of them what we can with that. But as far as supporting them, definitely with student housing is some way that I've been supporting them. We really have to make sure that we bring down the prices on student housing because it's very unaffordable. Also making sure that we have enough student housing because a lot of the communities around UCF are complaining about students living in their communities and taking up all the parking spaces because everyone living in one house. So by working with the development with student housing, that's been one way that I've been supporting the university.
Okay, and Mike Miller, that question to you.
Well, I think the county could actually maybe broadcast the games on Orange TV. That would be good. But no, seriously, and I do agree with Commissioner Benia, you know, with the, with the traffic out there and the, you know, Alafeha Trail and University Boulevard being very wide roads, pedestrian safety, bikeways, those are things that the county can really look out for the, for the students. And, you know, being a, being a, a large public university, they are going to be growing. They are going to continue to attract students because of the beautiful place we live. So I do think working with the residents and actually trying to figure out a way to get, you know, it would be considered new urbanism. I mean, it's going to be dense around UCF. That's what's going to happen. But if you can make the density such that people can have a safe walkway or a safe bikeway to and from their, their, their house or their apartment, that, that would be a great benefit to all involved because it would take pressure off the roads as long as they can get across them safely. And I think that's, that would be a great example of a new urbanism opportunity to create density in the right way, in the right place, so that it benefits the university and vice versa. The university would, would be able to attract more and smarter students that we will ultimately hire in our jobs in the, in the county.
Okay. The next question I want to ask you, actually, the issue came up a little earlier in the debate, and that is affordable housing. What role should the county play, do you believe, in the affordable housing crisis? And that question goes first to Emily Benia.
Yeah, so I've been working with the National Association of Counties, looking at what other cities are doing for affordable housing. And what I'm finding is the, the best approach is that, first of all, the county has to invest in affordable housing, something that previous boards haven't wanted to do. So I'm really happy to work with this board that we're finally pushing in that direction. One thing I said is that if we really want to make an impact, we're going to have to have $100 million invested. And so that's what we're doing now. Every year we're doing $10 million till we get to that. Another thing that I've found in other cities, what they're doing is that they're doing mixed income housing. So you don't have just, just all of it affordable housing or low income. It's mixed. So I did ask them, well, the people are paying full price. Don't they complain? How do you get people to move in? And they said that, well, they haven't had any issues with that, which was surprising to me. But it's working there, and that's definitely something that we should be doing more here in Orange County.
Mike Miller, the role the county should play in helping ease that affordable housing crisis?
When I was elected in 2014 to the Florida Legislature, it was one of the things I worked on the hardest. And I can tell you that in working with Mayor Dyer and working with then Mayor Jacobs, they did a tri-county study on homelessness and the housing situations in central Florida. And I took that study and I went to work in figuring out how to help with long-term homelessness, episodic homelessness, work on the funding for affordable housing, a lot of what I like to call attainable housing. Because as, as we've talked earlier about, there's a lot of impact fees, a lot of things that go around building, building houses in central Florida. And we've got to be very cognizant about the price of a home because you want to make it attainable for a family to live and raise their children. So I worked very hard, and especially in this pandemic right now, the funding that I worked on in the legislature to allow for local control, which is a very important part of the bill that I passed and is now law, that gives money to the communities like Orange County to be able to help with episodic situations. You can't make a rent payment. You can't make a utility payment. I have allowed through that law that I passed in the legislature to help those families. So I think I would continue to do that exact same kind of thing as your next commissioner.
Okay, and Anjali Vaya, what role do you think the county should play in, in helping ease that affordable housing crisis?
This is a big, big issue in Orange County, as we know. And I know there, you know, the task force did a great job that the mayor had, had put together. And I would support those initiatives and ideas because I know it's going to take a few, you know, a few years for us to implement all the ideas that were put together by the task force. We must increase the supply and quality of affordable housing and preserve the existing affordable housing. Some of the things that, you know, I would support is removing some of the regulatory barriers, diversifying the housing stock, like expanding the types of houses that are being constructed. Also implementing some incentives that promote the housing construction. Again, the proximity of the jobs, the transit, the services, these are all things that relate to affordable housing. And, and, you know, again, we must have units that, you know, that, again, work with the current low-paying jobs that we have. They need that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that concludes our East Orlando Chamber of Commerce, Orange County District Five Debate. Each candidate now has a minute for closing remarks, and we'll start with Mike Miller.
Well, again, thanks, Steve, for moderating, and thank you for the chamber for, for hosting this. I do think, and, and WUCF, I do think that the most important thing that's come out of this, this conversation today is that we have some challenges. There's no doubt. And as your next commissioner, I would hope to take the life experience I have raising my family here, working here for the past 20-some years, take the experience that I had in the legislature, especially working on issues like affordable housing and bringing new and better businesses to central Florida and protecting our unique way of life and the beautiful environment that we have here in central Florida. I will work very hard as your next commissioner to do just that because ultimately, my kids, who are both off in college, I would like them to say, where else in the world could I live that's better than here? And I wanted to say, you know what? There's no best, no place better than Orlando, Florida and Orange County. So thank you. I appreciate you having me.
All right, Anjali Vaya, you have a minute for your closing remarks.
You know, my, I am the only business owner in this race, and my past has, has demonstrated that I've come through some very challenging times. And I understand what, I simply am here because I care. I care about the people. And I've achieved the American dream, and I want to just give back. That's why I'm here. I'm not happy with the current commissioner, you know, and I'm not the one, I'm definitely not here office shopping, not here for just a one-issue politician either. I'm here to just serve, to be your public servant, to be there, to care about you and utilize my business experience as well as my technology experience to bring back a stronger, safer community in District Five. And again, thank you for giving me this opportunity to have these conversations with you.
All right. And finally, Emily Benia, your closing statement.
Yeah, thank you. It's definitely been a pleasure serving since 2016. And when people, they compliment me or say thank you, one of the words that they use to describe me is courageous because I am not afraid to go up against the status quo. I'm not afraid to fight for the people. And that's something I'm going to continue doing. And that's something that we're definitely going to need moving forward after this pandemic because, like I keep saying, we cannot continue doing things the way we used to. And it's going to take courage to be able to, to go against that status quo and realize that we do need to do things differently. And it's going to take some creativity, innovation and thinking outside the box, all things which anyone who watches the meetings can see that I've been doing. So I look forward to another term and to serving the people and to keep being courageous, to be able to fight against the status quo and fight for the people and what the needs of the people are. Thank you.
All right. Well, primary day is August 18th. If any one candidate gets more than 50% of the vote, they will win outright. Otherwise, the top two from the primary will face each other in November's general election. Many thanks for joining us, and make sure your voice is heard by getting out to vote in August. From all of us here at WUCF, goodbye for now.
The East Orlando Chamber was proud to join forces with Business Force, UCF, the Orlando Law Group and WUCF to present the 2020 debate for Orange County District Five Commissioner. As the leading resource in business advocacy, community engagement and regional connectivity covering 440 square miles of East Orange County, the East Orlando Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to supporting strong government and the political process on behalf of businesses throughout central Florida. Business Force is Florida's Regional Political Action Committee. The committee supports businesses and good government in central Florida. And as a sponsor of this event, the Business Force board members want to thank the candidates and thank you for participating in the political process and watching this significant debate in Orange County. Thanks again on behalf of Business Force. The Orlando Law Group is a full-service law firm, supporting estate planning, family law, bankruptcy, business issues and more. As a proud community member of central Florida, the Orlando Law Group is committed to offering hands-on care with expert knowledge to each client they serve.
We will teach you in a room. We will teach you now on Zoom. We will teach you in a house. We will teach you with a mouse. We will teach you here or there. We will teach you because we care.